Hi, this is Lori Johnson with Hancock Whitney Bank and you're listening to Local Leaders, the Podcast. Visit localleadersthepodcast.com for previous episodes or for information on appearing on the show.
Hey everyone, and welcome back to Local Leaders, the Podcast. And look, on November 5th, we have a ballot. It has a lot of important elections on it, not only nationally, but here locally. Now, one of those names is here with us today. So I want to welcome him and I'm gonna let you introduce yourself.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having me. My name is Taylor Hubert. I'm not really a lifelong resident of Watson, but my family moved here when I was five years old.
Well, that's pretty much lifelong.
Pretty much.
Unless you're seven and you look older than seven.
Pretty much. So my brother and I are six and a half years apart. So when my parents had my brother, they had said, we're not going to put, we're not going to put two kids through private school, a central private. Let's, let's take the trip north. Let's go to Watson and, and, and you know, I'm a product of Livingston Parish Education, product of Live Oak High School and.
Yeah, see that Live Oak shirt you got on right now? It's funny y'all, because I got a yellow jacket in the corner and he keeps looking at it cross eyed. I'm just kidding.
I hope Brett Beard sees this. Go Eagles.
There you go. Well, you're running for the District Two School Board seat and that was Kelly Hennessy seat?
It was.
Okay, and she is now in the legislature. So I guess she vacated that seat and someone took that seat ever just temporarily?
As an interim position, yes, sir. Ms. Stacy Robinson. She was, she was in education, I want to say, for over 30 years. When she retired, she retired as the Assistant Principal Position at Live Oak High School. I have a lot of respect for, for Ms. Kelly and Ms. Stacy Robinson. I think them both have done a, done a wonderful job. Kelly served for almost 12 years.
Yeah, she was staple in that district.
She was. She was. And, and she represented her people in her, in her district in the best way she could. And, and Ms. Stacy's really carried on that legacy of, I've told everybody, I wish Ms. Stacy would run because she's way more qualified than me. She, she knows education. She knows the people. She knows the, she knows the, the rules a heck of a lot better than I do.
Yeah, she's not interested in.
She wants to enjoy retirement.
I don't blame her.
I don't blame her either. Thirty plus years in public education. She wants to go spend the time with family and grandkids.
Well, very good. And now you have announced and you're, you're running like crazy. You are definitely burning the soles off of your shoes, trying to get the word out on who you are, what you represent, all of those sort of things. And you are married.
Yes, I am. And I'm married to an educator.
Yes.
My wife's in her second year at, at Southside Elementary, right here in Denham Springs. So I work in this parish. She works in this parish. We're, we're proud to spend our money and be a part of Livingston Parish.
Love that. And you got a baby on the way.
I do. I do. Baylor Drew Hubert.
Oh, great name.
We found, found out the gender two, a week ago Saturday. So her due date's March 1st. We're excited.
Yeah.
Life, life's changing, man. Life's, life's evolving. I'm a big family person. So Drew is, Drew is actually the first name of my brother. So he was, he was pretty emotional when, when we told him, hey, look, our, you know, boy's middle name's going to be named after you.
Yeah. And that's your first child?
It is.
Okay, so got a boy, your first time out.
Yeah.
That was, I was the same way. And, and you know, there's nothing like parenthood. A lot of people listening probably know there's nothing like it. Did you do a gender reveal?
We did. We, we, we had a, I don't know what you call them, little cannon or something. You pop the thing and the, the blue or pink comes out. And I just had family there, very small, very intimate, but it was, uh, it was, it was awesome to see.
That's pretty awesome. You know, when my kids were born, they didn't have that yet. So my wife's like, I can't believe we missed out on getting to do that. I said, well, I don't know why I didn't think of it.
Back at, back, back in your age, I just got told at the hospital, it was like, alright, it's a boy.
That's how I found out.
Alright, we're having a girl.
We're having twins. What?
My wife's a twin, actually. So I'm, I am very fortunate. I'm not having twins on my first go around.
I'll tell you, well, very good. And I know that's exciting stuff. And throughout all of that, see, life is just steady moving along. And Taylor decides he's gonna put his hat in the, name in the hat for the School Board seat. And I guess my first question would be, why? Why, why do that?
Well, I'm, I'm young, I'm energetic, and I love my community. And I, I, I've always felt the need to serve. I've, I coached travel baseball for 10 years.
Yeah.
So starting back in roughly 2013, 2014, started getting involved and, and leading young men. At that time though, that was 14 and 15 year olds trying to mold them into, into, you know, what high school would be, the preparation in the high school baseball. And trying to make, trying to make them into young men and what to expect in the real world. And then, um, and then got attached to a team, the Louisiana Nationals out in Springfield. So I was with them for four seasons and, uh, loved it, enjoyed it. My, my father got real sick, so I took, I took a backseat. We lost him in May of last year. And, um, so after that, you know, I, it was just something that kept calling to me, you know? I mean, I, I met with some principals in the Live Oak area and, you know, got their opinion, their honest opinion. And, and, and they said, look, we would love to, we would love to have you as a voice. We would love to have you as representation. And I just want to lead. And, and I think, I think that's what good leaders do. They bring people together. They, they formulate ideas, formulate opinions. And, you know, sometimes you gotta step on toes. Sometimes you gotta say the things that some other people are scared to say. But at the end of the day, that's what leaders do. You know, they, they take charge. They, they're at the front of the line and they, they give the best representation they can for their community members.
I couldn't agree with you more. And you mentioned in their voice, and if y'all, you were the voice of the Live Oak Play by Play for a little while?
I was. No, we were talking about that earlier. I, I, I give all the credit in the world to Bayou Sports Network, man. I, that was, I tell everybody, that was the funnest five years of my life. We were, we were at the pinnacle. It was Brett Beard, Brett Beard's first year at Live Oak in 2015 was my first year.
Yeah.
And I, and I, and I left when, when, when he left in Denham. I mean, when he left to go to Denham. So that was, man, we, we, we saw some, some, some packed playoff games. And I mean, I'll flat out tell you, I witnessed Live Oak football play in the playoffs, the day after Thanksgiving, which is, has only happened one time. And to see, to see thousands of people pack the stands and, and at one point, we had over 3,500 listeners. It was, it was insane. It was something truly that I'll never forget, you know, how small it was in time. It just, looking back now, that was almost five years, five, six seasons ago. It's like, wow, man, we, we touched a lot of people. We impacted a lot of memories.
It really does. And, and look, in small, smaller areas like Livingston Parish, and, and you know, it's hard to almost call it a small town anymore, small parish. It has grown so much and we'll get into a little of that. But it still has that small feel.
Yeah.
And, you know, Friday nights, under the lights, is hard to beat, no matter what school it is.
100%, 100%.
Let me ask you, you held a meet and greet recently.
I did.
And one of the best things you can do at meet and greets, I would imagine from a, from your perspective, is you learn what the people you're gonna represent ultimately are looking for in a rep. What are their concerns? Things like that. And you got a few of those. I've been following your Facebook page, which incidentally, give him, give him a follow on Facebook if you, if you get a chance and he'll keep you updated. But one of the things was with regard to the growth and your district specifically, which I guess before we go any further, District Two is all of the Live Oak area essentially?
All of Watson.
Yep. Okay. So one of the biggest growing districts in the parish.
Amen.
Multi-purpose buildings are something that are concerned. Let's talk about that for a minute. Why is that a concern? And what can we do about it?
A couple of months ago, I, before I even formally announced to the public, I met with every principal and their staff at each school.
Yeah.
And, you know, you, you drive by something for so many years, you don't, you don't understand or see the problems that they, that they're facing every day.
Yeah.
Take for instance, Live Oak Elementary. The school was the first elementary school built, which was over, a little bit over 60 years ago. The school population has very much increased in 60 years at Live Oak Elementary. They, they don't have enough bathrooms. Their cafeteria is small. It's an older school. So, you know, the, the phrase I've heard is, is yeah, multi-purpose building. And what is that? That's something that, that they can have an awards day ceremony at the end of the year. They can have a Christmas play. They can welcome just, more than just the mom and dads for that children. They can welcome grandparents. They can welcome brothers and sisters and aunts and uncles to see, you know, Junior or Suzie, you know, do X, Y, Z, whatever's going on at the school. And it's, and it's, we're sitting down with the principals and just saying, look, we, we have a need for this. And they were showing me pictures, I mean, of a, of a, I believe it was a, like a Christmas play that, that the elementary school had had. And just, I mean, you're shoulder to shoulder, you can't fit another, you can't fit another soul in there and then incorporate bathrooms into that building. So, you know, I think, I'm pretty sure Live Oak Elementary only has two bathrooms, one on each side of the school. But back then, you only had a very limited number of students. So you didn't have a need to build a whole bunch of bathrooms. And, you know, you know as well as I do, you can't take a 60-year-old building and just throw some more plumbing up there. You know, I mean, you've got to, you've got to do something. And, 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 and that's a, that's a big thing. Cause it's, it's, I guess it's in the, it's in the name, multi-purpose, right? You know, bathrooms, picnic tables, you can use it for plays, you can use it for X, you know, whatever the, the case may be to house the students or, or, or house, you know, members of family for, for certain activities.
Agreed. And I'll tell you this, you know, and this was, has been a couple of years ago, but it, it reminds me of the importance of the School Board every time I think about it. 2016, we had obviously a major flood, especially here in the Denham Springs area where everything went under feet of water.
Yeah.
I had three kids that were all in school. One was starting at Denham Springs High School. The other two were supposed to start right up the road at Southside Junior High. And Southside Junior High went completely underwater, was, you know, ended up being demolished and rebuilt during that flood. And it was, you know, it was horrible for so many of us around here. The consideration of people with kids, I remember distinctly thinking, how are the kids gonna go to school? Like, that clicked after about four days.
For sure.
How are the kids gonna go? I cannot tell you how proud I was. We had a School Board that stepped up. They did a bang up job.
For sure.
And that's a lot of pressure. You've now got, I think, most of the schools in the parish were flooded. I mean, it was a mess.
It was, it was unbelievable.
I want to give a big shout out to our newest sponsor, Level Dumpsters. The good folks at Sea Leveling Company offer both commercial and residential dumpster rentals in multiple sizes from 15 to 20 to 25 and even 30 yard dumpsters for all your dumping needs, whether it's cleaning up a construction site or just cleaning up the backyard. You can call them at 225-310-6647 or book online at leveledumpsters.com and new customers can save $100 right now. Just mention Local Leaders the Podcast when you book. Level Dumpsters is a verified partner of Local Leaders, the Podcast. It's very important, sometimes these positions, these boards that people get voted into, it, you know, people don't put enough thought into the importance of who you're putting in that position. Is it someone that can handle pressure? Is it someone that has their heart in the right place? Is it someone that sees things? You know, not everybody's gonna agree on everything, unfortunately. It'd be great if everybody agreed with me, but I never find that.
If you want to make everybody happy, go sell ice cream.
Right. From that aspect, that's what I think about when I think about voting for candidates for School Boards is if it floods tomorrow, is that guy gonna be able to come up with a plan and handle it? One thing, and I'll come out and say, you've impressed me a lot with, with your thought process. You, you think outside the box, which I look for in all leaders.
Yeah.
Because not everything is cookie cutter. As a matter of fact, most of the time it's not. It's, it's, uh, it never turns out how you think it's gonna turn out on paper. And you have to see all sides. Let me ask you another thing, another concern that was brought up was in reference to technology.
Yeah. So Livingston Parish is a one-to-one parish. And, and certain schools get certain federal funding for technology and most of the Live Oak Schools don't.
Yeah.
So the problem I hear from principals and their staff is, hey, look, you know, we, we're, we're one-to-one. So each kid, and, and I don't think kindergarten is thrown into this. But I think it may start in first grade. You know, each kid is sent home with their own, his or her laptop or tablet, whatever it is. And they're not expensive tablets. I mean, let's just say the max value of it's $500. Well, how long do you think a $500 piece of equipment would last you in the podcast industry?
Right. Yeah, it's not long.
Much less, much less to an elementary school kid taking care of it, you know, 182 days out of the school year.
If it's my kid, they're in trouble.
Probably not.
Probably not.
You know, so, so it's ways to try to get creative, to, to, to get some funding or, or, or get monies that are freed up or allowed. And, and whether that's through a federal grant or whatever, just, just let's put our heads together. Let's see what's available out there to, to get children, the, the access to technology and new technology, let's just say every three to four years, you know, let them, let them follow, for instance, let it follow them from their freshman to their, to their senior year or, or, or let it follow them from first to, to, to fourth grade and then, you know, onward and onward like that. So, you know, what can we do to, to, to limit the life term, I guess, of that, of, of that specific device? I mean, they're only gonna last so long. Some of them break now. They've got Band-Aids, they've got duct tape on them. So what can we do? What can I do as a School Board member to say, let's, let's, let's look outside the box, like you said, and let's see what's out there available funds wise to, to, to say whether we can get laptops, laptop carts, charging carts, whatever it may need. So these students can have the, the best tools capable year in and year out to, to succeed and, and, and mold themselves for, for the next step in life.
It's hugely important. And I actually served on a committee and I'll give you a good example of that. And it was called the Link Up Livingston Committee. And our whole goal was we were trying to get in internet for underserved parts of the parish. There were grants out there called Gumbo Grants. And I, I think they have a second aspect to that now. But these Gumbo Grants were a competition. It wasn't every parish gets this amount of money. You had to compete for funding.
Yeah.
One thing that we learned and another thing that the School Board here, I think in Livingston Parish, did a great job with because nobody saw it coming was COVID.
Yeah.
But one thing we learned in COVID is that if these kids are home, there's a lot of issues with like internet access. You know, it's hard to get online when you have good and you're in the middle of Denham Springs. You have good internet access and you're trying to get online to these portals to have school, much less if you're in the middle of nowhere and there's no service. And some of these kids, sadly, there was a lot of aspects of this parish that were underserved. We were blessed, we were able to secure millions of dollars in funding for some underserved parts of this parish. But those are things from a School Board perspective that y'all may never see coming until it hits. Nobody saw COVID. I mean, you know, nobody saw it coming. And then it was two weeks to slow the curve or whatever it was. And, and that became forever and ever. Nobody saw that coming. And, and I think our School Board did a pretty good job of handling that. And that, those are things, that's the importance of this particular position, this particular vote, is, is those are the people you put in place, those are the ones that are gonna handle our children. And when they're faced with things like this. So another thing, pay raises.
It's the elephant area nobody ever wants to talk about.
They don't, because it's hard to find a solution, right?
It is. It is. And I mean, what, what are we, you know, I guess, I guess in this day and age in 2024, you know, my, my wife's in education, my mother-in-law's 31 years as a guidance counselor, my sister-in-law is a guidance counselor in this parish.
Oh, really? Okay.
My wife's twin sister is a teacher up in North Carolina.
Yeah.
Educate, educate.
Education all over the place.
Education's all around our family.
Yeah.
You know, and the, the question I have like to my wife, and this is no discredit, you know, the morale is low. And, and, and it is becoming harder and harder to not just be a teacher, but to be in anything in the public education system. And, and, and why is that? Well, you have zero support from the parent nowadays. Parents don't want to parent. And I, and I know I'm somebody that's not quite the parent yet. But I mean, I, my generation and, and your generation, if you acted up.
Oh, yeah.
You paid for it. My mom came to the school. I got whipped. The principal whipped me. And then my dad handled me when he got home from work. So I mean, you don't, you, you, you know, if the teacher, and, and my wife goes through this, you know, something goes wrong, you've got to send a message. And then the teacher's just asking question after question as to, well, you know, what, what, what about this? Well, what are you doing with this? You know, at the end of the day, little juniors, he's acting up. It's causing a disruption in the class. He, I'm, I'm just awareing you of the issue. And, 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 and it's becoming harder for teachers to do their job.
Yeah.
I thought the Department of Education at the state level did a really good job of the, the Let Teachers Teach movement that they, that they did pass through Bessie, cutting down on the Teachers' Bill of Rights, letting, letting students that, that are habitually disrupting the classroom, let the teachers handle that. Move them out, involve the, involve the admin at that point. Because at that, at that point, you're affecting, let's just say you've got 27 kids in the classroom, your, 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 your best interest is the other 26 kids. This, this kid's a problem child.
Yeah.
That we're affecting the learning and the ability to learn of the other 26 children. And so, you know, I thought the Let Teachers Teach movement was a great thing. And it also cut down on, on repetitive state trainings at the end of the year. So you're taking the same training over and over again. It, it cut down and consolidated to say, look, we're gonna do this as a one-off training or, or we'll revisit it every like three or four years, whatever the language says. So, so the Let Teachers Teach Initiative was, was a great thing in my opinion for teachers in the state of Louisiana. Cause it, it, teachers need to go back to, to just teaching.
Right.
Where, 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 we're getting, whether it's federal mandates, whether it's state mandates, or whether it's school mandates, it's, it's paperwork, it's stress. It's, it's just, we need to go back to the old days and just let them teach. And, and, and the parents need to parent. At the end of the day, I think if, if, if we can get some help at home and get some home support and, and, and Junior and Tommy and Suzie can act right, every, the, the morale's gonna increase because the job's gonna get easier. You know, there's no such thing as a perfect job. If there was, there'd be a million, it'd be a million people in line for that job, you know? But I think if we can do some things collaboratively all together, and let's just say it all kind of works itself out and this new initiative ends up being good for the Teachers' Bill of Rights per se, you know, hopefully teachers can become a little, a little less stressed, you know, a little, a little more into their, to their realm of norm of, of, of just doing what their, what they were hired to do in the beginning.
I would agree. And, you know, one of the ways, Taylor, with regard to raises in particular, if you look around our surrounding parishes, and don't fool yourself, these teachers do the same thing. When they're looking at jobs and they've got options, especially good teachers, look, experienced, been in it a while, great track record, other parishes figure that out. And if they're coming looking for a job, money matters. Money matters. Now, I will always say that you can get paid a million dollars a year. And if you don't have passion for what you're doing, it's not gonna make a difference.
100%.
But if you have passion for what you're doing and, and, you know, you have someone offering you substantial amount of money more to move, it's harder to keep your good teachers. And that's common sense for everybody. So any School Board would sit down and say, yep, you're right. Everybody knows that we need to pay our teachers more. The question is, how? We don't have any money. Or I've always been a fan of cutting, cutting where things need to be cut. If there's some fat somewhere that you can cut off, maybe you're a little heavy in one area and you can shift some money around. I don't know. I don't have the books.
Yeah.
But, but I've always been someone that, that, that looks into, okay, what's our bidding process like? Are we bidding out jobs? Or, or we just kind of going with the same people we've always gone with? Can we save some money maybe with this paint person rather than that paint manufacturer? I don't know. But you, when we sat down initially and discussed all this, one thing I liked is that you're like, yeah, we need to get out of the box. We need to.
We're gonna have to.
Figure out a way.
We're gonna have to. So I mean, Livingston is out, out of the, out of the six surrounding, and Livingston's included in this, out of the six surrounding school districts, Livingston is dead last. So, so you go Ascension, East Baton Rouge, Zachary, Central, Livingston and Tangahbahoa.
Wow.
Livingston ranks last in pay.
That's surprising.
Starting pay. So everybody is leaving us in regards to recruitment and retention. And, you know, what can we do to recruit people in Livingston Parish out of college?
Yeah.
Well, you gotta pay them.
Yeah.
You know, why would they come to Livingston when they can go to Ascension? Why would they come to Livingston when they can go to, go to Central or Tangahbahoa? You know, you've got to pay them and you've got to be competitive in that. And then how do you, on the flip side of that, how do you retain a 10-plus year veteran teacher?
Yeah.
You gotta pay them.
Yeah.
You know, so if, 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 if they're, if, if our pay scale is, is, is $8,000 short of what Ascension's and Central is, and it is.
Yeah.
Why would they stay here? And, and, and I think it's evident when you had 150 teachers leave the parish. Now, take in mind, some of them did retire. So it's not all 150 just leaving in busloads. But you had a turnover rate of 150 teachers this past summer. You have teachers that I know for a fact, my son just, my daughter, my son just graduated. I'm not tied to Livingston Parish no more.
Yeah.
I'm going to Ascension to make 12, 12,500 more a year.
Yeah.
That's, that was the exact conversation. Look, I was, I stayed here in Livingston Parish because my children went to the school. You know, they, I, I got to bring them to work every day. I got to bring them home after school. We're not tied to that anymore. There's no more strings attached for me to stay here. So I can now go make more money for my family. And at the end of the day, you can't blame them. I mean, at, at the end of the day, it, you're gonna go take more money. I can't look at you and say, well, you're, you're, you're morally wrong for that. You're not. I mean, why, and why would you blame them? You know, these are, these are, these are, these are civil surface workers. You know, these are our, these are our backbone of our, of our United States economy. I mean, it starts in the classroom and kindergarten and first grade.
And our people. I mean, it's.
They are.
Education. It's, it's, I, I have always tried to stress the importance of if you want to make a difference in, in your community, it starts with the people you're raising.
Yeah.
And the tools that you're giving the people that are teaching these people. Nothing in life is as important as education from K to 12, in my opinion. Because that's when they're reared.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Show me a man at 10, I'll show you a man at 45. You know, they, between those ages, they're reared. That's why elementary schools, teachers, for example, to me, have the most important job of all. Because by the time they hit middle school, most of them have developed a personality and work habits and things like that. Now, that can change over time with the right teachers and education people in place. But you've got to take care of these people. And there are some teachers here, I know a lot of teachers, and there are teachers here in this parish that absolutely love what they do. And they could probably make what they made forever. And they wouldn't leave this parish because they have a heart for this parish.
Sure.
But it's the new teachers, the new people coming out of college with an education degree that you're trying to attract. Because all those teachers are, are getting up there in age, they're gonna be retiring. And, and it all starts with thinking outside the box. I know one of the things that was kicked around was a impact fee on construction for incoming housing. And that impact fee would go towards teacher raises. And I thought that was pretty well thought out.
I heard the council, council say that. I thought it was a wonderful idea. I think it's unfortunate of previous councils years and years ago didn't, and.
Yeah.
And initialize that. I'm pretty sure the city of Denham Springs does that already with their city council.
Yeah.
I, I think it's wonderful. I mean, you're talking about an impact fee that goes to the school system, that goes to gravity and drainage, that goes to the sewer district, you know? What can you take away from that? You know, and at the end of the day, you, you, these developers are coming in, they don't care about Livingston Parish.
No.
You know, they're here to, they're here to build a home and get out, you know? So I mean, you know, if they want to build a, they want to build a subdivision, you know, and I, I say whatever that size would be, you know, in the subdivision, you know, let's take their money.
Yeah. Well, and, and they are, they're impacting everything from drainage to schools. You're putting stress on these schools. And, and no good school administrator is gonna come out and say, hey, we can't handle these kids. There's too many kids. They're not gonna do that.
That's fact.
But, you know, use a little common sense there. If you go from 1,000 kids to 1,400 kids with the same amount of teachers, there's some pressure.
Absolutely.
There's definitely some pressure there. And so we absolutely have to look at a way to, you know, find some money to pay our teachers and some of the other things like these multi-purpose buildings that you brought up. And I think that's a good way to do it. I think it needs to be looked into. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a feather in your cap right now. Because one thing that I really like that you're doing is that you're going out to all the elected officials, kind of introducing yourself, telling them what, you know, your thought process is on how things can be improved. And so you're taking the initiative.
Yeah.
And you have to have a good relationship with the council in, in certain aspects. Because the council's the one who is gonna approve that impact fee.
Absolutely.
So you have to have a, at least a communicative relationship with them.
I agree.
And you're doing a great job going around to, you know, just about every elected official and saying, hey, I'm, I'm here to help.
Look, I've met, I've met with current board members on, on the board. I've met with every principal and almost every assistant principal in the Live Oak Schools. I've met with, I've met with our previous superintendent and now our current superintendent. I, I mean, I've, I've met with the assessor, I've met with the sheriff. I, I want people to know who I am. I want to, I want people to know what I stand for and what I believe in. But on the flip side of that, I've met with, I've, I've walked neighborhoods, I've knocked on doors, I've had a meet and greet at Casimaria, I've had a meet and greet in Plainview Ridge. I, I won't. I've had a meet and greet in Plainview Ridge. Um, I, I want, I want the normal citizen, whether they're, whether they're an employee of Livingston Parish Public Schools. Or whether they're just a taxpayer of Livingston Parish and their children go to school here.
Yeah.
I want people to know who I am, what I believe in and what I stand for. And it's trying to just, display that message out very quickly. I mean, it's, we're, we're already in September past Labor Day and there's an election on November 5th. You know, it's, it's here. You know, so I mean, I, I, it, it's, it's reaching as many people as I can to, to, to share my message. And at the end of the day, if, if you're not doing this for the betterment of the kids, why are you doing this?
Yeah.
You know, yeah, the ideas I have, they're probably not always the best ideas, but I believe in surrounding myself with people that are smarter than me.
Yeah.
And leaning on others also in their opinions and their advice, because you, at, at, at the end of the day, I'm running because I want to represent Livingston Parish Public Schools. And the children and its employees in the best shape possible. I want to give them the keys to succeed, to have success as a student and as an employee. And I mean, we're talking from the teacher all the way down to the bus driver. It starts with the bus drivers in the morning. They're the first ones to see the kids and without the bus drivers, kids don't get to school.
That's right.
You know, so, uh, it, it, it takes an entire, and it takes an entire team. And yeah, pay raises are an issue. And I mean, look, I'm tired of talking about them. We ready to, I'm ready to fight about it.
Ready to fight about it. That's right.
It has to happen. And I mean, at the end of the day, you know, we talked about it. We've got to retain and we've got to recruit. So how do we do that? Well, I mean, look, we can incentivize all we want, but pat on the backs, little gift certificates to here and there. They, they don't pay nobody's mortgage and they don't pay for football cleats or, or dance shoes. It has to happen sooner than later. We have to do something. And look, I, I've said from the beginning, if education starts to fall, your property value starts to fall.
Yeah.
You go right around East Baton Rouge Parish.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they're
You just nailed it.
They're
Let that sink in folks.
Yeah.
Even if, because there's some people that they may sit around and they may say, I don't have kids in school anymore. I don't really have any skin in that game. Who, you know, oh, it matters.
Yeah.
You just nailed it.
Well, it's, it affects everybody.
Every, everything.
The one cent sales tax did, did fail and it, and, and look, people are burdened by taxes. But I'm, I'm, I'm a taxpaying citizen also. I live in Livingston Parish. I'm burdened by taxes.
We are.
Nobody wants to pay more taxes, but at the end of the day, we have to get creative. We have to think outside the box and we have to do something. And if we do nothing and if we just sit around, we keep talking about it, we keep passing around the, the baton and just saying, well, look, you know, what about this? What about this? Morale is still low. I've met with these people. I've met with, with our employees. They're, we're not in a good spot. We have great leadership now, and I believe in Mr. Jody Purvis, but, but we have a lot more work that needs to be done.
Yeah.
And at the end of the day, it's, it's, it's sitting up there on the podium and talking about the things nobody wants to talk about. Nobody wants to talk about the pay raise because it's a bad subject to talk about and the tax did fail. And I, and I'm, and I'm sorry the tax failed, but at the end of the day, we need to look, go look at ourselves in the mirror and say, okay, well, what can we do? You know, the independent audit, we did do an independent audit and we did do a lean frog spending assessment. The independent audit showed that, look, you know, we're, we're going to be short. We need $24 million reoccurring yearly.
Yeah.
You know, at the end of the day, you know, the, the school board has their, uh, Millet meeting on Thursday. I think what people don't understand is the, the little bit of, of, of revenue they're going to get from that Millet, which isn't much. I think it's like 3.5 million more dollars.
Yeah.
The cost of fuel this year alone is from 2021 is insane. The school, the parish was spending 600 and something thousand in fuel just three years ago.
Yeah.
It's over 1.2 million this year.
Wow.
So I mean, and just take, just, just take that, take that chunk and then we lose COVID S R money at the end of the year. Or I'm sorry, we lost that for this school year.
Yeah.
So that, that, those S R funds, that COVID money, it's gone.
It's gone.
Uh, and, and you know as well as I do, uh, the, the price of groceries, the price of this, the price of that. Look, I
Everything, car insurance.
I, I, you, I was fixing to say it and, and homeowners insurance. My, my home was built in 2008. I mean, I have been through, I bought my home in 2020. I'm on my fifth homeowner's insurance company.
Yeah.
I can't get a, I can't get a price now under $3,400, but I can't get a new roof either, you know? So it's either me go finance or pay cash for a roof and I can get back down to $1,200 a year, but it's, it's everything. And, and there's some things that are, that us, the people in our local government, we don't have any control over.
Right.
You know, where does car insurance, um, easement and where does homeowner's insurance come in at? Well, in my opinion, that comes from our state level, you know, we have to incentivize insurance companies to come do business in Louisiana again.
100%, you know?
And I don't think
They don't have to.
And I don't think we need to be in the back pocket of big lawyers.
Yeah.
You know, you drive around Louisiana and you're not from here, you would think attorneys are the governor, you know, they got billboards everywhere.
That's true.
But you know, why is our car insurance so high? Well, so many people are uninsured and, and, and they can sue. You can get an offender, they can sue you for half a million dollars a year and you never went to the doctor.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, there's, what, why is our homeowner's insurance so high? Because the state of Louisiana made it so difficult to write policies. And if you made one little mistake, they would penalize you and they would regulate you. And then take in mind, we also had, uh, what was it? Three hurricanes in a calendar year or a full 12 months, you know?
Yeah.
One in, uh, one in, I guess two in Lake Charles and then Hurricane Ida. So yeah, that didn't help either. But I mean, we're, we're affected on every end of the spectrum right now. You know, there is a lot at stake. There's a lot at stake on our federal election and on November 5th. And I, and look, I hope and I, I'll, only I can hope and pray that our, that our state government can hear the issues that the, that the normal middle class working person has said and said, look, I am, I, I am struggling, you know? I've, I've got to get some easement on, on, on insurance wise. I mean, I've, I've done business with the same insurance company ever since I was an adult. When I always had American National.
Yeah.
American National quit writing policies in the state of Louisiana. So them as a, the, the, the insurance company I was with, they sent my home out. Of all the people they deal with, which I don't remember the number, she told me only seven companies came back to underwriting to say, look, we'll cover his home.
Wow.
It's an epidemic. And look, my roof is not old.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not like I've got a hole in the middle of my roof. I mean, it's just a, the home was built in 08, the roof is 2008. And insurance companies look at that nowadays and go, look, we're still getting regulated the crap out of in Louisiana. And, you know, who knows, a category five might come around there tomorrow. We're not going to cover that thing. And if we do, he's going to pay for it.
Right.
$3,600 a year is a lot of money for, for, for a home of my, of my size. It's not very modest, you know, starter family type home.
Yeah. No, I agree. And, and so that creates hesitancy and you mentioned it, that, you know, this, this, uh, raise for the teachers was on the ballot. It was voted down. I think that, that, uh, you know, for me, and this is a citizen speaking, but I think from my perspective, it could have been promoted a little better. I don't think a lot of people understood it. And I think that when you want to get anything passed, you have to almost go overboard on education of it. And what it is and why we're asking for it and who's it benefiting?
Yeah.
Because I don't believe the vast majority of our citizens here in Livingston Parish do not want to pay our teachers. I just refuse to believe that.
Yeah.
Um, and I would almost bet anybody any amount of money that I think that it came down to, uh, the promotion of it. And making sure, I think one thing that's important to the citizens is that they know it's going where we're being told it's going.
For sure. And so I, you know, look, I, I think, um, unfortunately, social media plays such a large role in everything we do nowadays. And it's a double edged sword.
Yeah.
So I, you know, the, the, the tax, um, was voted on, I believe in March of 23.
Yeah.
Uh, I went to two meetings. I went to one at Live Oak and I went to one in Denham.
Yeah.
Between both of the meetings, I was probably one of between 50 and 60 people there.
Yeah.
It was a public meeting. Nobody, nobody wants to be educated, but they will believe whatever they see on social media. And it's unfortunate, you know, I talked to a mother last week, you know, she, she wants to educate her children. They're 13 and, and 11. Um, she, she wants to educate them as to, to, to what's going on in their, and their, and their local government, what's going on in their, the, the federal government. Who, why, we're going to vote for this person, but ask why, why are we going to vote for this person? I said props to you. Not everybody does, nobody does that anymore. You know, nobody wants to be educated, but if somebody said, I could put on Facebook tonight, the, the grass at Denham Springs is, is, is going to turn purple on Thursday. Somebody's going to believe it. Well, it's, he, he said it, it must be true.
Right.
You know, so, so there was some things out there that, you know, there was a, there was some half's true, half truths to it. You know, I, I, I think that there was a lot of, there was a lot of intake about, hey, look, you know, if we buy a vehicle in Livingston Parish, the 1% is going to really, really affect us on that end. Well, look, I, there's, in my, and I think there's four main manufacturer dealerships and, and Livingston Parish, they're all on Tuban and Denham. So you got Kia, Nissan, uh, Dodge and Jeep.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's just say you buy a, a, a $60,000 vehicle. And at 1% of that, that EFID tax, that's $600.
Yeah.
Let's just say the life of your loan is, uh,
Now they're going 72, 84 months.
Let's just say the life of your loan is 60 months.
Yeah.
That's $10 a month, you know, and it, and it didn't affect groceries. And obviously we weren't taxed on gas. So I mean, yeah, look, I, I, do, do I think the tax had some good things to it? I do. I, I, I believe that. Um, but at the end of the day, uh, it didn't pass. Um, and we, we have to do something, you know, and I keep, I keep going to that, you know? Um, East Baton Rouge has the same 1% EFID tax.
Yeah.
Um, Tangier Bahoa has a half cent and Ascension was smart. They put it in their property taxes.
Right.
And I mean, I, I was down on highway 30. I travel for work around the, the Louisiana area. Driving down highway 30, they were smart to put it in their property taxes because they have the industry.
Oh, yeah.
You know, they're going to collect way more revenue on that 1% in the property than they ever would in the sales taxes.
There's no doubt.
I mean, I, I can ta, I can name you five chemical plants right off the bat and we haven't even gotten to United Rentals in Granger and, you know, I mean, just Cabellas. I mean, uh, so yeah, Ascension has the industry where we don't. Um, I, I, people support our education system. I don't want to, I don't want people to, to, to think that they don't. It's just, we're burdened by things right now. We have to figure something out. We have to look at the numbers. And I think the independent audit showed us that, that, hey, look, you know, there's, you know, unless we cut some serious, serious fat, there's not $24 million there reoccurring yearly.
Yeah.
And, um, a raise is imminent. I mean, we have to, we, we have to give them something. We have to show that, that, hey, look, we can, we can do this. Cause we need to be back number one.
Yeah, I agree. And, and look, it, it's, you know, it's not even like a raise as much as it is. With the inflation, they're really at a loss. They're really making less money than they did two years ago.
Me and you are.
Yeah.
I mean, our dollar doesn't go as far as what it did in 2020, 2019. I mean, we're all, we're all impacted by this.
Yeah.
I think then that's why I said it earlier. I think there's a lot at stake at the federal side in November, you know? I mean, we're, 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 we're hurting. People are hurting, you know? I mean, we're not, there, there's not many one percenters floating around. This ain't Malibu in California, you know? This ain't, we're, we're, we're the backbone of, of the United States economy. We're middle class people who get up every day. We go to work, we put our boots on and, and yeah, we're tired in the afternoons, but we come home, we cook supper, we play with our kids, we love on our wives and, you know, we, we do the same thing five, six days a week.
That's right.
We, we are, we are middle class people, you know?
That's right. I agree. And, uh, I have no doubt that I, I got a, a really big feeling that that's, that probably top on your agenda of things to look at and, and solve and work with people on, because you know, you can't do it alone. You've got to work with others. And like you said, uh, you know, if you have the smartest person in the room, you're probably in the wrong room.
Yeah, for sure.
You're open to ideas and, and, uh, and things of that nature. And that's what I like.
You gotta get creative, Jim. Look, we're, we're high, the parish is hiring people right now. We wouldn't have hired 10 years ago.
Yeah.
You gotta throw a warm body in the classroom. And at the end of the day, do you want a warm body teaching your child?
No.
You know, I mean, look, we, 20 years ago, there was 40 job openings and I, and that's probably high for, for 20 years ago.
Yeah.
There was 400 people applying.
Yeah.
You got 200 job openings now. You got 20 people applying.
We need to get back to that.
So, so, so where do you find the mix? And the mix is you got to recruit and you got to retain.
Yeah.
And how do you do both? Well, you gotta pay them.
Yep.
You can, you, you can give them good insurance, which they have, but you gotta recruit them and you gotta retain them. And, and, and at the end of the day, unless you're one heck of a salesman, money talks.
Yeah.
You know?
That's right. Uh, let's talk about something that recently occurred in the school system and that is cell phones. So, man, when I went to school, cell phones, I'm not that old y'all, but they, because they had cell phones, they just zipped up in a bag. And, and they were like a million dollars, but, uh, nowadays, apparently that's something you can bring to school and have in your book sack. And look, to me personally, citizen here speaking, I think it's a distraction. I don't think that, uh, look, I, there are plenty of people that made it through high school and middle school and elementary school when cell phones never existed. I promise y'all out there, uh, that are just now to the age that your kids are getting into school. You don't have to have those. And the, uh, the legislature had figured that out and they figured out this may be a distraction that's taken away from education. So we're not going to have them. And, uh, that, there's a new law in the books now.
I support, I, I supported it. Um, and, and I do agree. I think it's a huge distraction. I think when you look at most ninth through 12th graders, probably got to give them a Xanax for the first week of school because they were so
So true.
They didn't know what to do.
Yeah.
I mean, I talked to some of the principals. They're like, they're having like withdrawals and, and it, look, it's unfortunate, right?
It is.
But it's the generation we live in. Everybody's glued to Facebook. Everybody's glued to, to Tik, to Tik Tok, Twitter, social media. I mean,
All of us. I mean, parents, no exception, right?
I've got a Snapchat, a couple of emails, a Facebook notification and four text messages already. And we've only been on the air for less than an hour.
Yeah, it's crazy, isn't it?
We live and die by these cell phones.
Yes, we do. And, uh, and that's something that, uh, I think has created a distraction. And I'm not a, a grandpa here saying back in my day and all that sort of stuff, although I feel like
You're not that old.
Yeah, I'm not that old. But I can, I know that it, had I had a cell phone when I was in high school, that's what I would have been on. I wouldn't have been learning about, uh, you know, the Civil War, things like, like that. I would have been learning about, you know, Snapchat and stuff. So there's a place for it. And, uh, and I just personally felt like school was, was not somewhere that that need to be. I don't think it compromises the safety. I know some parents, well, what if something happens? I can't get, you know, call the school. And like, like we did in the old days and, and the principal will page Jim to the office and that's how
We have a wonderful, an alert system as well. So I mean, let's just say, let's just say something happened at the school. Our, our parish has a wonderful, um, I say national, that's not the word, but we have a wonderful alert system that, that reaches parents in a snap of a finger.
Yeah.
Why? Because of technology.
Yeah.
Because of the, the, the Apple and Android market that has dominated our environment for the last 15 years. You know, so I mean, look, I, I, it was, it was a distraction. I think the legislature looked at it and said, look, technology's evolving. We need to evolve. And, and at the end of the day, there's a thing called chat GPT.
Yep.
You know, how do we know that these students aren't using this to cheat on this algebra test, this physics test, this geometry, this English, write this English paper, you know? So we had to, we, we, the legislature really had to look at that and say, we might, we might make some, some, some feelings hurt. But I, like I said, about five minutes in, you won't make everybody happy. Go sell ice cream.
That's it. That's it. It's not going to happen. You just can't make everybody happy. So you're exactly right. Last thing before, uh, we get out of here, I want to get, uh, you know, we were talking earlier about thinking outside the box. I watched the most recent, uh, school board meeting and in that meeting, uh, uh, a lieutenant from the Denham Springs P D spoke. And he spoke about a occupancy tax that the city of Denham Springs is, is, uh, looking to place on hotels in the city. And that will pay for, pay for your police officers and fire. They're going to kind of like split it or something, if I understand it correctly. I thought it was a great idea.
100%.
And I'm like, why have they not been doing that? But you know, it's, it's like every great idea. You're like, why didn't I think of that 20 years ago?
Exactly.
So, um, you know, that, that is an example of what thinking outside the box will give you. You have a passion for it. You can see when we talk and that's what I look for in any candidate for any job, uh, that's serving the public. So I think that that is an out of the box way of thinking to find money. And I, and I hope that y'all can come up with some sort of idea there, because I think that it all starts, it all starts with your teachers. I believe that.
You're correct. And, and people also, uh, and this speaks to the people inside the city of them springs. They need to be educated on it. This is not a tax that's going to affect them.
No.
Unless their wife kicks them out and they gotta live in a hotel.
Or their air can, or air conditioner breaks and look.
This, this affects, take my company, we put people up in, at, at the Comfort Inn right there off, um, off of South Range by Downs.
Yeah.
Uh, probably four or five times a year, you know, that our company pays for. So when we have outsiders come in, we, we want to keep some of that money. And, and I'm all for building another hotel. I mean, I, I mean, if you're running out of room in the three hotels you got, build another one. Get the money out of it, you know? So at the end of the day, people need to know that if you live in Denham, it doesn't, it doesn't affect your bottom dollar.
Right.
This is for outsiders coming in to support your first responders, the ones that respond, the fire, the police that, you know, and it goes to recruitment and retention.
Yeah.
How do you do it? And, and it's, and it's pay and we got to pay them, you know? We, they're, they're, they're worth it.
Right.
Without them, we, we're, we're just running around the streets and like the movie out of the purge.
Oh, I agree.
You know, we gotta have our first responders, you know, just like we gotta have our teachers.